They would create some all standard.
Religious allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God into this whole community justice for all.
Thank you. Morning, everyone. Dale, your first on the list, tax payment.
Good morning, Council. Dale, what we can have honest with all. Pleasure to be in front of you today, especially two really good successes. Companies that both of them have made considerable investment in the county and are getting ready to do that again. Abatement request to help significant company and with them as they're making the decision to do these investments. So I also want to thank Representative Michael Pender here who's working with both of these companies as well to support them. So first one up is Indiana Materials Processing. I don't know how many of you are familiar with them. They are in Rail Connect. And they're here because of SDI and their business continues to grow. And I would like to invite, and this would be Resolution 2024-12, again, Indiana Materials Processing, we sometimes refer to as IMP. And Abed, their general manager and president, he's just going to tell you a little bit about what's going on in the project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Slightly notes. Yeah, we are Indiana Materials Processing. We moved to Wiltley County in 2012. We were very graciously welcomed by the development permission. Let's do what we do. Just take two minutes of your time to tell you what we do. We get steel out of used tires. And with that is then recycled into a very desirable product for SDI. There's two pounds of steel in every steel that the radial tires. And we recycle 4,000 tons a month. So you're talking about 13 million tires that we help recycle in a quarter, by God's grace. And we've been expanding. We've expanded our building three times previously. This is the fourth expansion that we're going to have. We have roughly 20 people. We are very fortunate to be here. We think we've really found home. And we like the community. And then, like everybody else, we ran into a lot of trouble with COVID and finding people. And we've now found a solution for that, which is we get people on the work release, federal work release program. We have up to five people that we are helping rehabilitate back into society. And, you know, people love us. They love our culture. We give them a chance. And they're now being mainstreamed back into society. And we're always begging Dale to help us with, you know, finding residences for them and helping find cars and stuff like that. But we take our people very seriously, and because of that, we've grown. We continue to grow, and this request is to add our next extension, which is going to be a warehouse building. It is a building where we will receive the tire wire that we get. And it'll help us free some space within our current building for more manufacturing. So that's what we're waiting for. If you've got any questions, I'll happily answer them. We are the only ones in the world that started doing this. Now I've got competition, but we are the first ones in the world. Started in 2012, and now by God's grace, it's about 12 years that we've been doing.
How does your product come into you before you process?
In super sacks, sir. In super sacks.
So it's, what comes in? Just the metal belts?
No, sir. It is pieces of tire wire that have been removed by the person. We're not tire recyclers. We are metal recyclers. There is a tire recycler before us who's interested in the rubber. And we don't get into our suppliers' business, and they don't get into our business. We handle the steel end and they handle the rubber end. Rubber has other uses. Rubber has mulch uses, uses of making playgrounds, of making turf for ballpark and stuff like that. So rubber has different uses. It's a different market. It's dealing with the consumer. I don't do consumers. We do business to business.
So the additional space that we hope to create in your current facility?
Yes, sir.
And use it for more production?
Receiving and storage, which will then free us up for more production and, if God willing, new production.
Okay, so that last part of the new and more production, is that going to be additional equipment? Is it going to be additional employees?
Both, but I'm not here for that. That, God willing, it'll happen as soon as I build this and create the space. In the meantime, we are in active negotiations with other customers to take this technology that we've got and extend it to non-Ferris. We are just doing Ferris right now. And I don't know if you realize, the steel that goes into making this radial tires, it's extremely pure. And it has to be pure because you take steel and then you're stretching it, so it cannot have any defects. And previously, before us, it used to be more than half of it or maybe all of it went to landfill. And now it's a premium product that's a line item in a steel mill. So we think we've made a little contribution to society by doing that.
One of the things I generally look for, like to see in this situation, is the increased jobs that come to Wiltley County, not just warehouse space. So that's a big part of it.
It's, we believe we just buy this and the deficiency, we will add four employees. We had 20, and we'll go up to 24. God willing, we can find them.
The redevelopment gives us a favorable.
Yeah, thank you, Kim. While it is in the TIP history, this made more sense for a tax payment to help them.
Any other questions?
How long is it? How long are you looking for?
Just five years. So you're going to accelerate it one, trying to, and MicroPulse will be just five years as well. We're trying to get out of there. Ten year CEOP reporting cycles.
A pleasure.
Will I make a motion that we approve the abatement? 2024 days 12 for five years?
Have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Kim, second by Joan, and we approve Resolution Number 2024-12 for Indiana Materials LLC, five-year tax abatement. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And all those opposed, say.
Thank you. And the next one, obviously, the 2024-13, as we're familiar with MicroPulse. MicroPulse is one of Wiltley County's, not only largest by numbers, employees, they're over 30 million annually in wages. Have been a really good partner with Wiltley County in general. They just continue to have really great success over there. Two years ago, they were in front of council asking for an abatement on the expansion, which granted, and they then proceeded with the expansion. Now it's time to fill it full of even more equipment. I've got Leanne here from MicroPulse, who's just going to talk a little bit about the business. So this is just a personal property abatement request for, as you can see, quite a bit, $14 million over the next two years of tooling and equipment for their production and their processes.
Good morning. I'm Leanne Rambo, and I'm the Finance Director at MicroPulse. As Dale mentioned, we are almost complete with our 65,000 square foot expansion. We have had record-breaking growth in the last year. We're at 40%. And this was quite the pleasant surprise to us. So in the last 18 months, we've hired 140 people. Just some amazing results that we're having. So as Dale mentioned, we are looking for a lot of equipment for these people to work on and some additional employees in the future. If there's any questions I could answer, I'd be happy to.
Kim, they're not in the TIP district, so redevelopment has covered this. Well, we've seen MicroPulse grow from a garage to what it is today. The amount of employees, obviously, your products are good, or you will be continuing to expand. So see that you're looking to hire another 20 additional over the next two years.
Yep, at least.
So I think it's been great to watch you grow, and it's meant good for citizens who are in the county. Appreciate it.
I think it's amazing you got 140 employees in 18 months.
Yeah, that's a real testament to our culture.
Very good.
Are those all new positions, or are there requirements of like turnover?
There was some turnover, for sure.
Of those positions, are they skilled labor, are they entry-level office workers? Do you have any idea?
A mix of all. Yep. We have a lot of skilled workers, but we do have entry-level positions, and some of us were definitely in office.
I'll make a motion when we give the tax statement, 2024 days 13, MicroPulse. A motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kim, motion by Tom. So I'll go over this. Any other further discussion? Okay, the motion was that we approve Resolution 2024-13 for MicroPulse Inc., tax abatement, five-year tax abatement. Tom made a motion. Kim seconded it. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Brian Abbott. Oh, excuse me, Jack. Go ahead. You're up here.
Well, good morning. So the request I have, in front of you today, is the transfer of the proceeds from the four-wheeler sales that we completed on by auction. We ended up getting $5,000 from that auction. The law that went back into the fund that it was taken out of, it was a huge cap. After conversations with commissioners, we agreed that it would be appropriate to transfer that to our equipment fund, the engineer equipment fund, for us to purchase the service, the service package for the new side-by-side and as well as other community side-by-side. My request is $5,000 to the huge cap.
Is there a warranty on the sale? Is there like a year warranty on anything, or? I don't, I don't have any side. I didn't know if any of that came with it.
There is a warranty, but this service package covers little changes. Some stuff is not necessarily covered in the warranty.
And how, how long is it good?
Two or three years. Second.
We have a motion to approve the transfer. By Thor, second by John. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say.
Thank you.
Hey, Jack, or?
Hey, real quick about that. Side-by-side, we have that ATB, and they offer us 2,000 per three, and they sold off the deals for five. So we're real pleased with that. So thanks for transferring those funds back for Brad. I'm back this month to ask for our resolution for the real antenna. We'd still like to make that purchase from our, but I'm here to ask or answer any questions.
What is the total on that chat?
I believe they had in your last month, I believe that totals $82,913.
Resolution 2024-14.
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-14.
Motion by Thor, second by Nick, that we approve Resolution Number 2024-14. Arthur put it out, they have the antenna and other equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. Thank you. Next on the agenda is review of estimated property tax, recent estimated reduction to 100%.
Here again that you need to let us know if you want to keep things as is for the levy, or if you want to change something from.
We have two levies, correct.
Well, there's several levies that are tied, but the two that you're focusing on that aren't rate-driven are going to be rate estimate and.
Help department with a half a million dollars on their levy. And the assessor, fortunately, is pretty exceptional, basically $100. And then all the other levies, we've both time just left it alone. Comment, question? Yeah, we need motion if we're going to keep them the same, or discussion if we're going to change it.
I'll make a motion if we leave them the way they are now.
Have a motion by Kim. Is there a second? Second, second by Tom. Discussion?
Is this, I think this is a question for Chad. Is Chad still chatting? Could you weigh in on the fact of what the other, I know particularly on one of these levies, what the ramifications are as far as raising or lowering, and where else those levies could be increased outside of our control?
Probably better question.
And I'm good with that, too.
So obviously, you have the two that are set for 4H and counseling aging. The two bridge is inside the levy, and that is rates now, I think you changed that. Maybe back to a rate of a dollar amount. The KIM cap is outside the levy, and that is a rate as well. And then basically, the remainder of any of the levies is going to be in the general fund.
Which one of them do we compete with, though? With schools, libraries, and so forth? Because that's all part of one of the levies that we're involved with, right?
Well, they pick and share. They do everything township level, school, libraries, and then it all gets put into DLGF. And they tell us basically how much of a levy we get, and then we say where we want our pieces to go. I'm not sure how they're.
I know concern in the past is we were talking about lowering the levy at one time. But the concern is one of these other groups could pick up that portion that we lower it by. And so that's why I'm trying to, I hope to not be able to gather information on just what the other organizations that we would compete for in that same realm may or may not.
I can find that out, sure. And I will say that we are year-over-year trying to appeal to get more of our levy. We're still haven't received information from the state yet, but when those numbers come in, if we do qualify, that would be a possible additional $480,000 into our levy. Able to help cover expenses. We've never been able to get it, but hopefully it's here.
Thank you. Can Chad, I need to put you on the spot. I know we've had conversations before, but it does pretty much circle back around to Tiffany, so thank you.
Any other discussion? A pleasure.
You got a first and second.
There is no other discussion. I'll call for the vote to leave the levies the same. Kim made a motion. Tom seconded it. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed.
Morning. Have any questions on the portion of budget? You prove it today. I will have it entered into the state system by September 1st, and that will be reflected on the state website. And this can be changed to TP in the future, or possibly by those churches. What we have in here, far as the payroll part of it, the people are being paid out of the HFI part, which is the 1161 thing, does indicate a 3% increase for.
So what if that's not the percent that we?
Then I'll go back in and change those numbers. That money is anywhere else.
So where would somewhere else be?
First, we got supplies, education, information, medical supplies, all travel, all kinds of things we can stick to. And most likely would go into probably training, conferences. Because usually, those are the two that usually work out by the end of the year.
What if it's greater than 3%?
Then I'll steal money from somewhere. More likely, I'll steal that money from the $40,000 that I put in there for the year. Don't imagine the change would be too much unless you're being very, very generous this year.
What would be the difference? Have you calculated how much difference does we prove besides just the 3%?
Yeah, you got $668,000 in HFI, so percentage is, you know, here or there, it's definitely tremendous. And I were budgeted in that car line item anyway, just give us a buffer. If that money isn't all used for the purchase, then that money is going to be used for all the insurance, all the servicing for the vehicles for 2015. That way, all the vehicles are paid out. State free money first before we touch the levy money.
Tiffany, can you, can you explain to us about taking all vehicles and tractors and whatever we buy out of the budget? Would that fall into that, that we would take that vehicle out?
If you're wanting to set that as a precedence, then yes, we should have any major equipment stuff for highways. I know they have to. But I mean, that's a decision that's up to you all as a board. And then you would just have to shift that, obviously, somewhere.
Right. If you're saying we don't want you to buy vehicle at all, I'd take that $40,000, and most of it probably would go back into the partnerships that we're making. So we'd probably split that up, looking at what the needs might be among those that we have selected on the back page and giving that money up to them.
Don't we have two additional vehicles right now that are not currently being used or being used very little?
They're pretty, are pretty used. We are using them.
Are you?
They're actually used quite a bit.
Are they?
They are taking one of those vehicles later to take to conference. I mean, they're constantly being checked out and utilized. It's a great asset for us.
Having another vehicle would be helpful.
Because the assistance, say, this would be for the community health nurse, which is occupied by Darcy, and she's out and about every day with different groups.
Well, Tom and I went and talked to Scott about the big change in this budget this year, and all they have to do. I don't know if taking that car out is year to do that, if we would do that on equipment. I don't know. There's so many moving parts this year, and we don't know if this is correct, whether this is the final year for this.
Correct.
Or not.
Right. The 2025 session will determine the next two years. And so the current HFI expires June 30th of 2025. So unless legislative and governor sign it again and indicate 150 million or more, then this goes away, basically. I mean, they could do less and have less to share if the commissioners will sign that comment again. But yeah, basically, it's money given to us right now. It may or may not be there. We can set aside that percent, like I said before, of the budget, so $660,000 could be set aside for 2026. We'll have to indicate what service it goes to then and have a budget different. I don't know if we want to do that or not, if we extend it.
If they don't extend this next year, or even the next year, what, are there many things we're being locked into?
No, I mean, everything, so partnerships are going to be a contract that's signed by the commissioners. It's just for the term of the one year. So January 2025 to December 31st, after that, we, no money guaranteed to those people at all. Our budget, that's shared with the state, will go back to just the levy, and then they'll do that as. So like this year, $263,000 is being saved in the levy because we're spending that in the state.
If I remember right in our conversations, we partnered with the state, but you hired no additional help.
Right. I want to hire anybody else to help fund the city. I'm a decent person, though.
So I mean, I'm, you know, I'm good with the car. And like, like he said, he budgeted more than what it's going to cost, so maybe the rest of the money we can put towards some other things towards the car. The best part about it to me is we did not, Scott did not, he does not have the job, hire any additional help to run this program from the state. So the biggest thing he needed to know is the wages to finish your budget up.
Yeah, like I said, in there is the 3% is indicated in that, plus our 159 is what we indicated there. Again, if you change it, I don't think it'll be significant. I can't find someplace to put the money either way. But I think that not hiring anybody does puts accounting into a position for that. We are putting a lot of emphasis on partners doing a lot of the work that's supposed to be indicated in here, and almost every staff number is taking on additional duties to make sure that we accomplish what they want.
I have no more questions.
So I guess the question. Our question is with 3% that you're putting in for wage. Tiffany, do you think we need to make a decision today on that?
You can accept the budget as is. And if you change it later on, I just have to go back in and change it, which is acceptable to the state. They just want to make sure that's final by January 1st. So I can go back and change it up to that point, but I need to know at some point. Obviously, the greater the change from 3% will be significant. They just want the budget in place by September 1st or because that's what state law is saying needs to be done for them to do.
But you could change it after September.
I can, yes.
Well, that's, we got, we had two things there. One is his budget, the other one is salary. Percentage on salary. We don't want to tackle that today, then we can put that off and you can make an adjustment. But the other part of the budget needs to be done so that he can get it entered. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, a side discussion here, I know we've talked about too, Jim, on major purchases inside of budget. For any of the departments. And I know we had talked about rather seeing those as a additional appropriation when the, when it's time for the expenditure. Rather than something that's, well, we know we're going to do this year, this, this year. So we lump a larger than usual number into that budget. That wouldn't necessarily be there the following year and wasn't there the year before. So I didn't know if we had any more discussion where we were at on that issue either.
No, I, I, we haven't, I don't believe had any more discussion on that. That's a two edged sword we had talked about, you know, because one, one part is okay, if you pull it out, you got to remember you pulled it out and, and bought that equipment from another line item. Or you leave it in there and you give a true picture of what that takes to run that department every year. Sheriff's Department buys three cars every year. That would be consistent. What you're saying is the ones that whatever four years.
Yeah.
It, it's hard to remember. It's hard to go back and see and their budget says this.
Well, yeah. And so if it's something that we wanted to keep in the budget, I would rather see a four year, if it's an every four year thing, I would rather see a plan in place that we're budgeting something. And Ted and I have talked about that too. And she doesn't like that idea because then it gets, it goes back in. So when we talk about that, I would rather just see as a, you know, when that four year, every four years comes, I would rather see you come in and ask for an additional appropriation. The thing we would have to do is ear tag that money in the general fund, knowing that it was going to be spent that year when we, when we maybe set it aside from someone's budget because, or tell them not to put it in their budget. Because of the effects that it has on. Sometimes it doesn't get changed and taken back out of the next budget cycle. That's my concern. And I think that's where we could do maybe a better job or a more transparent job on what those budgets truly look like on a year to year basis.
Yeah, I just saw the opportunity because the money might not be there next year. It's coming about the states.
Yeah. And that, and the situation is different from some of this coming out of county general.
Do we have a motion on the table?
No, we do not have a motion on the table to approve this budget. So. Any more discussion? Have you got anything?
No, the 3%. I go along with that, but I think Chad, did you guys do something with the salary? I mean, did you?
Yeah, we were, we were made aware of an Indiana code 36, statute 2-5-4. That calls on commissioners to make a recommendation to council on guidance for pay increases year over year. So in compliance and following that, I see we made a vote yesterday that our recommendation would be to follow either the state or the federal guidance on that. Of course, the federal numbers aren't released, but we know the state is doing 3%. So in this case, at this time, we're recommending the 3% increase. But we're very respectful of the fact that that's a council decision as well. So that's totally it.
Okay, thank you. Taking motion, may I approve Scott's budget with including the 3% of what we just heard?
I have a motion by John. Second.
Yep, second.
Second by Thor. Any further discussion? I do like the fact that I think our, that discussion topic needs to go further for the future. I agree, that gets systematic, but that's not in this motion. So, so we have a motion by John, second by Thor, that we approve the health department's budget with 3% increase. Calling for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Thanks, Scott. Okay, you had a, in your package, you had a longevity pay date letter.
Yes.
We changed that last year, correct?
Yes.
That way employees can get it.
So you have that first now.
Right. Your pleasure on that.
Motion we approve.
Motion by Nick, second by John, that we approve the longevity pay date as December 26th. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say the fact. Council payable and payroll schedule 2025. Anything on that, Tim?
Make a motion, we approve as written.
Motion by John that we approve as written. Third second. Second by Joan. Thor, okay. Any further discussion on that? There are none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Personnel committee.
Okay, we've had five requests on here for a while now. We need to get them finished up. Some of them are rather large requests. Some of them are going to, all of them are going to affect the budget. And the personnel committee has not three times on it so far. Doesn't matter where I start. I'm going to start with the extension office first. That, I hopefully that takes the quickest. Todd, they want to take a, make a part time USTEM program assistant. You want to explain just in two minutes what that is. I know you've done it a couple times before, but if you do it again. And the personnel committee voted yes to make that a part time position.
Yeah, so talk real quick about bringing a 4H STEM part time program assistant onboard. Part of our STEM program that I launched five years ago continues to pick up speed here across the county. I shared with the personnel committee some information, some data on where we wrap with that. Coming into this year, I was at max capacity on what I could provide. And I was to the point, I was telling different youth serving organizations, no, we can't come into a STEM program. I'm out of dates. Told our first school, no, I had to turn them down because I'm like, I just, I can't. I don't have enough time in the calendar to make that happen. So through some other workings, we got some donated dollars this year to fund a part time STEM program assistant from January through the end of this December. And I knew it was soft dollars because it was only going to be a linear gig. But with that, our STEM program just literally exploded on what we were able to do. Just trying to glance at my quick numbers on where we were at a year ago compared to where we finished up this year. So in total number of events from last year to this year, we increased by 32 total events, which was huge. The number of kids that we reached grew by more than 1,100. Our STEM program goes in the schools during the school day as well as after school. We also partner with the Center for Whitley County Youth at all three of their after school locations. So South Whitley, Cherubosco and here in Clubby City. We've done programs for the Y. We've done programs for local daycares and things like that. STEM is a huge need in the youth here and not only in Whitley County, but across the world. And I think we're able to provide them something totally different. I was talking, a conversation I had with personnel committee is, you know, made a discussion on what schools provide. And is that something that they should be doing and something totally different we do in the 4H world is. The way I view it and I've been on the school side of things is they teach them the nuts and bolts. And in the 4H world, we give them the experiences using those nuts and bolts. So we provide opportunities to get kids engaged that uses what they, what they learned in school to do what we do. So when we roll in with robotics, computers and drones and we're making slime. And last week we were blowing stuff up by using and combining it with art. That's stuff that they're not able to do in school. One, they don't have the manpower that we bring. Two, they don't have the supplies to do it on a regular basis. So we do provide a very unique opportunity. And many of you know here at Whitley County Consolidated Schools, many of the elementaries now have a STEM teacher. That's part of their related arts program. But talking through with the principal previous year, they're like, you're still so different than what we do. We still want to be in our building. So every one of our elementary buildings, we went in and did multiple programs this past year. Even if they have a STEM teacher, the difference is, is what we're able to provide is vastly different from what they can give the kids. So this position would deal directly with that program and continue to help us expand. We're constantly creating new activities and writing new curriculum. We work with high school kids that are a part of our 4H program. Kids learn best from kids. That's not a secret. Much, they, they learn way more from them than what they're ever going to learn from me or even from you. Kids learn a lot, especially in that elementary age when they see an older kid walk in and start talking to them. So a whole different branch of what we do is that leadership piece with those high school kids. They don't see it as that. They see, I'm going to get out of class for an hour and a half. That's awesome. So I want to be on the STEM team. But they're able to come in. I work with them. They have a passion for science or passion for technology or engineering or whatever it might be. I train those kids. The side note is what they don't understand is they're getting a whole huge component of public speaking that they never knew that they were going to get. Most of them don't even know today that they got it until years down the road. So that's been really cool. That part of our program has really exploded when we first started. We had four kids on that team this past school year. We had 21 high school kids on the team from all three high schools.
Excuse me, part time, how many hours you, you said, how many hours it'd be?
I'm looking at 20 hours a week. So basically to round figures for a year, we're looking at 1,000.
Any other questions from Todd?
What's the rate that this would fall underneath?
I forget where we put that. Do you remember, Jennifer, where we put that?
It does not have a job description yet, but proposing 18 hours an hour is my opinion.
Maybe in our discussion. You know, enthusiasm that your staff has plus what we see the enrollment on these programs is increasing. And this day and age to get views involved in something like that. We cautioned about doing too much, doing the school's work. We also asked if there was a way that maybe you could ask the school for a little money too. Whether it's supplies and things like that, or the fact that say their budget's tight too. But I think we, I think we need to ask all the schools and schools to help with that. All the worst thing I can do is say no.
Correct.
You know, and that, and I just, I just think the, the improvement that we've seen in the numbers and this is a new concept. We always have to change things. So I, I think it needs favorable recommendation.
Yeah, with the schools, we, our program at the schools is not free. We do collect $2 per kid when we're there. And I know I'm cheap. I know that's crazy cheap for our consumables because, and I shared with the personnel committee that, you know, there's some, some days we're losing a lot of money when we go out to the school. There are other days when it was a huge purchase of when we roll in with robotics, when we do our program with robotics and go out and we may do that 10 times. You know, we're making some money there because we're not expending that for that particular program or that particular day at that event. But we did upfront. So we are recouping some costs, especially for our, our consumables and things like that for our program. But I, I agree. I think there's something down the road that can be discussed in schools on, on partnership, but still understanding their budgets are still really tight. So, but it's true with them too. It, it does affect our Whitley County 4H program. Like how many of those kids, you know, we're going out to do a hands on STEM and giving those kids those opportunity. Our growth that are with the county 4H program is directly attributed to our STEM program. There's, I know we live in rural Whitley County, Indiana. There's so many kids and families that still equate 4H to just animals. But by being able, being able to take STEM out into the schools and these different organizations. And I always tag one of our teams at one of the activities, the third of the 4H team. And that simply means you got four minutes somewhere during your activity to share about what 4H is, why you're in 4H and what you do. And through that, our 4H program continues to grow every year. This year we topped 900 for the first time in over 25 years, which has been amazing. The number of kids that are taking even projects to fair has exploded. Our static projects, those who are non-animal projects. If you read the Whitley County Fair this summer, our static project exhibit was the largest it's been in the back as far as 35 years ago. We topped 1,200 exhibits up there. We haven't been, we haven't been over 1,000 since I got 30 years up there. So which has been amazing. I think there's, there's, I think it's been great to share that with the kids. And a lot of people just assume you live in Whitley County, you know what 4H is. That's just not true.
Todd, when would this start?
January 1st.
Jeff, did you say, do we still need to send it in for?
Well, I'll have to work sometime on the job.
Okay. Pretty sure we're not going to move more than 18 of them. Yes, okay. Good, all right.
Any other questions, Todd?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need to debate have a motion on each one of these in? Because you got five of them.
Your pleasure on. Todd's recommendation for the STEM program.
I'll make a motion that we approve the STEM program. Our time out.
Got a motion by Kim. Is there a second? Second by Joan. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. All those opposed, say.
All right, second one I'm going to do this where is there anybody here from prosecutors' office? Okay, prosecutor's in. They lost deputy prosecutor. They need to replace that position. According to the prosecutor, it's about twelve thousand dollars short on salary to get anybody qualified for that position. He's asking to make that twelve thousand dollars more per year to hire new deputy prosecutor.
And that total will be what?
Ninety thousand, right? Ninety thousand dollars? Yeah. And he, he told us that that would not, he told us it would not affect any other salary ranges at his office.
How does that number compare with what the state says is the mandate for that position?
I mean, that one paper, it falls right in line, I believe, with a level, was it level three? Trying to find all of the papers. Level two. It falls in line with that. Yeah, with, yeah. Level two is from eighty-six.
The state tells us what we're
Ninety-nine.
Pay prosecutors.
I'm sorry.
The state tells us what we're going to pay prosecutors and probation.
Just, just the prosecutor, not the, not the deputies.
Jim, look currently, currently at seventy. And they're just not getting any interest on their request.
Did he not say, Jim, when we talked to him that most of them around the area was a hundred and twenty? That they were getting paid?
Well, the average attorney in Indiana makes a hundred and forty-three thousand. That's just an attorney. So this is still a position and anybody that didn't experience, he's got to have ninety thousand according to his presentation to us, which I guess I wouldn't argue that.
Though like I said, he said it would not affect anybody else in his, in his area.
And he has no place to pick up a little bit of that line item that he can spend.
Not according to what he, he gave us, no.
Make a motion, we approve the prosecutor's request. Sorry.
Is that with or without the three percent?
I don't know that we decided on three percent.
Well, I'm, I'm just, well, you can put it in there. You don't have to. I'm going to take it back out. I'm just wanting to know if you're planning on using a percentage or, or you're going forward just with the ninety?
He requested ninety thousand, so we go forward with that.
So John, if he finds someone and wants to start him in November.
I don't think he put a timeline on when he wanted to do the hire, did he?
As soon as possible.
I think he wanted pretty quick.
That's my only question.
Yeah.
Under motion.
Yeah, he, he, and I'm not sure if he, he might have a couple of months.
Make a move. I amend my motion to include his request to start as soon as he get a hire.
So that motion by John approved the request. Basically immediately if that position, if that person gets hired. Is there a second?
Well, second without the, with the percentage added to it at a later date.
Agreed.
Okay. We have a motion by John, a second by Kim.
Whatever, whatever, just so I'm clear. Whatever increase we decide for this year, that new hire, that gets hired, most likely Q four this year will be eligible for a payroll increase for twenty twenty-five, is that what you're saying?
Be correct.
Yes.
When you can, but.
That's right. Okay, everybody okay with the motion? Okay. Call for a vote?
Go ahead. If we have further discussion, I'd like to add in.
Okay.
I'm okay with the motion, but I do have further opinion at this point that I'd like to add in. I have a hard time approving that much of an increase because of what market value may or may not be and the difficulty of filling that position at this time. And we still haven't talked about what we're going to do for all of our employees as a whole. Because that's dedicating a pretty good chunk, substantial chunk to one position. And I'm kind of getting the feeling that we're, or at least there's been some discussion about a three percent market. Not so, not so sure that we're looking at this from a scope of being fair to all of our employees by increasing this position itself.
Especially when we have nothing, but especially when we have department heads that are well below where they should be.
Well, let me ask this question. Have you reached out to speak to BJ?
I have not.
Well, you did a whole presentation to us twice and we're counsel all of the most who were here last week. So you don't have a detail on what was needed?
No, but I have spoken to departments who are say feeling the, the need of a substantial increase just because of where rest of the departments are across the state. And I think that we need to be fair to those that run departments over a brand-new employee that has no loyalty to its county.
Well, there's a dire need in our certain courts with prosecutor being a large person and he's short a person because of the tragedy that occurred.
I understand.
And they're overwhelmed and they can't hire anyone. He's had interviews. No one will touch us because of our pay grade, which is substantially lower than average, which was wonderful of the past for the prosecutor to take that offer now. I mean, their degrees are there. Oh, did the department heads have all the degrees that assist the program?
I'm not arguing with you that there's.
I'm just saying you don't have the knowledge. I don't feel you have, you don't, you didn't hear the presentation.
I didn't hear the presentation either and I'm going to jump back in to finish my train of thought. But I do have the knowledge and my point is here that I'm making is that we need to be fair to all of our employees and all of our positions in the same breath. And I don't think that we have taken the opportunity to have that discussion yet on what kind of money's available to give a raise. I fully agree that that position is very important and that it needs to be considered and probably raised to that level. But I think Paul, the hole of the conversation still has to take place.
I'm not disagreeing now. I'm just, they've, they've got a hole that they need to fill and that's where we're at.
So I guess we'll table that position until we
We got a motion on the table.
Motion on the second.
And a second.
All right, we might as well go ahead with the tip.
Have you? Any further discussions or comments? Because we do have a motion by John and a second by Kim. On that.
So we're, so if we vote it down, we're just going to leave prosecutor hang there for a while until we have discussion on wages. Is that the way I understand it now with you?
My thought is we need to look at that overall pot, decide what we're going to do with it. And then when there's money available, I'm all about feeding this at the same time. But I think it's a, I think it's a piece of a bigger conversation. That's, that's all I'm saying.
That's, and I'm in the same boat.
So who made the motion, please? You want to pull that?
Can I, can I explain some?
And then we'll just table it until we have a discussion on wages.
I'm not sure that's a proper way for you to say.
Okay.
No, we've got a motion and a second.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm not looking at this as a whole for the employees. This is a position. And that's where the difference is. I'm not saying I'm totally for this. I just, they, they have a need. It's no different than a department head losing a crucial employee coming to us and say, I need help. And that's how I see that. That's just my comment. I don't see it the way you see it. I agree that the department heads have every right to come forth and say, you know, we would like to see more also. But that's not this type of need. That's an overall increase. This is the need.
Well, we're not telling them not to.
That's a wash.
We're not telling them can't fill a position. They're just having a difficult time doing it. So it's not like we're telling them they can't do it, John. It's still in the process.
All right. Well, that was just my comment. I look at it differently than the way you are and I see what you're saying. But I don't think they're the same.
Okay. Any other?
So the motion was?
To approve to ninety thousand as soon as we get a position filled.
But he wouldn't get the three percent raise.
Wouldn't get three percent.
Not till whatever, so twenty, twenty-five is.
Well, that's what Nick was asking. I thought we answered it the other way. So I'm not clear. If, if Nick asked it, next question was, and this is what I'm a clarification on is if, are you saying that it'll bump up to the requested number now and then January first, they'll get the same raise or whatever anybody else gets?
He will not.
Okay, so that's different than what I was, than what I took out of the conversation earlier.
He won't be hurt raised until twenty twenty-five. Or twenty twenty-six.
And that percentage would be whatever we decide for all of the employees.
Yes.
Are you okay with that, John?
Yes.
So we have a motion on the floor. John made a motion to increase up to their request ninety thousand. Kim seconded with the, that in twenty-five, that position does not give an increase. Everybody understand that?
Comments?
Comment for election.
So if you think that we have some other employees that are, are underpaid, then I guess I'm at the position now, I'm not going to okay twelve thousand dollars. Any of you two think that we've got some others in the county that are not paid enough? I guess I need to look through the book that we get. Tiffany gives us all wages for surrounding counties. So I guess I'm going to vote no right now for the raise until we get this all hashed out on raises this year and what else we're going to do. That was my last comment.
Tom, my comment and my input is not, didn't have anything to do with the, where anybody's pay is set at. It was all focused at and my whole conversation was about increase, the cost, the limited increase that we will talk about at some point for every employee moving forward next year as part of this budgetary cycle that had, had nothing, knowing anything that's current or whether anybody's overpaid or underpaid. I've not made that any part of it. That's not part of my point.
Okay, any other discussion, questions, comments? Take the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say.
All right, the last thing. There's still three more requests, but we'll start with community corrections and sheriff on the reentry JCAP. So if Paula and the sheriff could come out and just, you've explained it, I know several times, but there's a couple that didn't hear it all. On create, on create a new position moving JCAP.
So I think the proposal is to create a new position in the Sheriff's Department for JCAP. Because my position is, has to be in a residential therapeutic community. It was a grant. We use the opportunity, go ahead and launch JCAP until where the jail was being built. But that's a funding source that's available October through September, and I'm not sure if it's being renewed. But he will need funding for JCAP.
Because you will have a grant for, if we move them out of community corrections, we'll be
My grant specifically has to be in a residential, yes.
So that's a first request we have here. So we'll need a motion to move that position to the new facility and create a new position for the Sheriff's Department.
And if it was my understanding, that was to be paid out of opioid funds, is that correct?
Definitely no, yeah.
So I can say consistently, the only, since we were made aware of the opioid settlement funds, the only thing that was discussed was that would be an opportunity to fund JCAP down the road. Obviously, that's something that commissioners have to bring to counsel. But that is an available funding source if you don't want to tax County General with this position. I know there's concerns about using that as a limited funding source, you know, limited period of time that we're going to receive that money. I think it gets less and less each year. So I know that Jim brought up your point, do you really want to use that for salaries? Yeah, you know, or another, which rather, you know, prepared funded through County General and use those funds for other programs and services. That's a decision I'm seeing. I guess that money is there, but it's a little over.
We, in Personnel Committee, we talked about the fact that we knew that JCAP was going to expand with the new jail. One of the questions brought up, if we move this person strictly to JCAP, are they going to be fully employed? That sheriff and Paula. And if we take on a second one in her position, is that person going to be fully employed? And that, so want to make sure that if we're moving and then creating another one, which is based, grant-based, are, are those people going to be fully employed? Because, because one of the questions come up sheriff was, did that person do both? And you, you said no because JCAP is, is, you know, by itself.
Percent.
Yeah, so we did ask some of those questions and, and to make, make sure that, you know, we do what we knew JCAP was going to expand.
I would do want to comment next. I did, you can answer to that a little bit in Personnel Committee. It's that as far as the reentry position, I can't say, we never had the opportunity to develop it. We made the building renovations before COVID to create a therapeutic community as our facility. Then COVID hit. We had to use that to quarantine. We never developed the reentry model at all. And then obviously we went forward to jail, JCAP units being, you know, designated out there. So this is just an opportunity to use that funding source the way it was supposed to be used in that therapeutic community. But I can't say for sure how many hours that reentry position's going to be. But if I don't need a full time, I won't, you know, I won't be able to justify it in a grant full time. And I have performance outcomes that have to meet some.
Any more questions from those two about the new position? And where the money will probably come from? Who has to make that decision? The commissioners, you got to make that decision if that money comes out of opioid?
The commissioners are committed to using opioid settlement funds for JCAP.
Okay.
So it would be part of our, part of our budget. Opioid settlement. Some is restricted, some is unrestricted. So there's certain ways that we can and can't use the funds. But we're committed to using it in full for JCAP revenue.
Thanks. Thank you.
And does that have to be reviewed now?
We have to send it back to Wes.
Probably because the, well, the combined position one, I don't know how different.
Well, I can't imagine that. I mean, we fully listed all job duties, so.
Yeah, so then it, it was factored in the cost too.
So we're, so we're good with that? We will send it back in to do new job description or anything like that?
Unless you're going to change it.
No. No. Very good. Any more questions on that one?
Yes, personal clear.
Each time you talk, I understand it. Okay. Need a motion a second on that? What, okay.
Now, we're just talking about the J cap, not.
Yeah, just the J cap right now, just number one. Yeah, the J cap. And on the motion, we'd like to, to pass it to create a new position and where the money will come from to be paid, correct?
Well, we're taking a position from under Paula right now to the sheriff.
Okay.
So if you're looking at these separately, then that's fine, but I need to know still where they're paid from. Because it'll be opening up Paula's position right now.
But yours will be a grant, correct?
Mine's a grant, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then the sheriff takes one now, which come out of opioid payments, right? Is that what you need?
I need to know, yes.
Okay, so like that all in one motion to create a new position and to move the current one to the sheriff's department, paid out of opiate money. I guess I made the motion. Okay, no reason to repeat all that?
We have a motion by Tom, tagged by Nick, whatever Tom said. On the J cap position, be funded out of opiate funds. Any further discussion?
Well, he made that motion saying we're going to create a new position and move the J cap personnel to jail with the opiate. But that was a separate issue, the new position with Paula, isn't it?
Isn't that how we were? Mine's already in my budget.
I mean, I'm talking about the motion. I thought we were going to do.
You're really not creating a new one.
No.
We're just moving a person and creating a new one for the jail.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, right?
That's correct.
That would be work, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. The Paula will be from a grant that she has now.
Jim, I would just like to publicly state that I'm going to abstain from, as I have a discussion on this or any decision making because the possibility of perceived conflict of interest.
Okay.
And what is that conflict of interest, though?
That it could directly or indirectly affect a band member of mine? And that who's in may or may not be in that position or one of those positions now or in the future.
Well, I respect the fact you want to abstain from it, and that's fine. I don't disagree or anything with you. But the last time I was accused of, I should have abstained. I looked thoroughly into conflict of interest. And by the state, Lord McHale, it is if you walk away with something. That's how the, that's how it's explained. If you're walking away with something.
Well, I don't feel as though you can force me to participate in this. I think someone abstaining from an issue is, is, is of their choice and is of their.
I, I know, I'm not saying.
I feel like I'm being attacked.
I'm not attacking you. I'm just saying, I looked into it and said it's a, I'm saying that for future.
Yeah, I would, I would probably get to use those guidelines for yourself, just as I have the same one.
So take it in the door. Okay, so we got a motion by Tom, seconded by Nick, that we fund, that we create a new position, J cap. And then the sheriff in his jail paid by opiate funds. Any further discussion? I'll call for the votes. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. With one instead. Okay.
All right, the next one, the personnel committee is a request from the sheriff on salary review and restructure for his chief deputy captain, sergeant, and deputies. I think you.
We need to back up. Are we going to do anything for Paula or not?
Well, I don't think we have to do anything.
I mean, now that Paula's keeping her grant position, we're just adding to the jail.
Oh, okay, okay, got you. Sorry.
Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
You got to keep up.
Come on, Nick.
Just watching the show.
Okay. For the next one, like I said, on the sheriff, you'll come up and just highlight real quick, if you would, on, on that, on your salary review and restructure for the chief deputy captain sergeant. And then we get that discussed, just stay up here for your three positions you've been requesting, please.
Just to cover everything, we, we, we did a, basically what we talked about is wages, anything like that. We all pretty much remember what we did. Get nice for lunch and get it from plenty places for the, for the job hires. So filling rate is, obviously benefit package, if they got that, that everybody else is doing because they're trying to hire people that are already officers. They don't want people in the community anymore. They want people that have two to three years on, so they don't have to train them to do that. So we're out of the data, we're trying to take apart, among the jet, maybe people like that, move to places for insurance or anything else. Moving after more of a wage phase and base it pretty much off what state we was going through. And a few of the other places that are, there's better ground here. I know that a lot of people think that we need to go as well, because we have sex enough here. We have, this county does sex enough here, it's comparable. What I feel is we went through the IDA website, we got information up there. The fact that I think right now, we're not competing with next door all over, we're competing with everybody around us. Not only the sheriff's department, sheriff's room, but even towns and cities too, larger sheriff's departments because of the incentive pay that they're even getting for sign bonuses and things like that. So we did take a look at that, and that's where that wage comes, is basically almost what states this matrix starts out. A little bit, so a little bit of like that, I think that was probably two years ago, I think on state, this matrix started two years ago. So that's where that number came in with. Also along with that, uh, well, you want me to stop there, Tom?
Uh, do you want?
Because I could just kind of roll into that three and then the twelve, the hour.
Yeah, probably not. I mean, uh.
I can't just, what's up?
Do you want more explanation on why he wants to do it or work? I mean, he gave us all this on what would raise everybody to. But I guess I just, we can either table this until we have a, a complete discussion on wages or we can handle it now. It's quite, quite a increase, I guess I'll say, for each employee.
I'll touch on some real clear on that. That would take us, what I look to do is to take us out of the annual wage decrease for Paula. I think that's important now, because it'd be something you have to base the decision on to an agreement also. Is that we would go into a salary bonus development, it would be agreeable for a two-year term, and it would take us out of that. It would just be reviewed by whoever the sheriff is beyond that point, or they can resolve, whatever they want to do. But it would take us out of that, it would put us more into a, maybe a review through Wes and growing trends on what Wes Martin's doing in the job hiring, things like that. So it just deals with just the merit side of things, nothing to do with this special. Goodby, I meant on the merit side, so it's twenty guys, nineteen guys, that would, this would affect. It's just merit, and it would take us out of the annual raise of whatever county decided for the rest of the employee. We can stay flat, we can agree on a two-year basis, and then we would go from there. If it's comparable, it's comparable. If it is a little bump, it is a little bump. But that's up to the every, the trend in this.
You have any idea what a total cost is across the board for the increase?
It all depends on what we're looking at, percentage like.
Well, if you get, you know, if you're shooting for the moon and you land on the surface.
I figured it out.
Are we talking two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand per year?
I don't think so. Three is the ballpark here. Everybody's going to start just at three, so sorry.
Right, so, and that's kind of how I have to look at it, is, you know, holistic thing, what's this going to cost the county? As a, you know, big picture. I would make a motion that we table this until we have further budget discussions for remainder of county employees.
Okay, got a motion. Nick, that we table this to wait. No one, we're going to discuss the other. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Other.
Okay, so then. Refresh my memory, when do you need our final number on wages increases and everything?
Typically, we have that by September meeting, and then I know what salary owners are back on.
So we've got, we've got the month of August, not giving up, to decide, or everybody to look over.
But I will say to that, you had me put seven percent in, and they're asking for way more than seven.
Yeah.
So I need to know before I advertise, which is in next, next week.
Okay.
Do I need to adjust deputies? Do I need to leave everybody at seven, and then they come back for additional appropriation? But as of right now, all employees are set at seven percent. And you have a way to be advertising.
And we did that just for type.
Right, you can't go higher, you can only go lower.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll second Nick's motion.
Okay, we have a second. The next motion. Discussion.
So, since we need to obviously get together very quickly, is this something that we can hammer up before the time that we need to have it done, but?
We've got another meeting, right? You said it was decided by our September meeting.
Did I hear wrong? I thought you said.
Well, I need to advertise, I need to adjust advertising for deputies. If not, I guess you can come forward with an additional appropriation if you guys do the percentage that's for deputies, but yeah, September is usually when you guys make your final decision on wages, if you're not going to do that today.
Would you have wanted to do the additional appropriation?
I love where they're going to be coming from as well. That's another thing we need to look at, except they're coming out of low, then it's not happening.
It never happens.
So what do you want to do then?
I have a personal.
I'm leaving the motion in second, I'll.
We have a personal second.
Hey, real quick, I don't want to throw a mix in everything, but I'll remind you, the commissioners have been paying the sheriff pension plan for the past couple of years. And so I think it would be a good idea to include that in the conversation because that's a short-term solution to that problem. I think we need to be looking at a long-term solution for pension as we consider this increase.
And I will tell you, Jason, I just had a discussion on this. As of right now, he has it in his flow, it's eleven seventy. But with the proposed budget in gateway at seven percent to advertise, we're in the hole. We're going to have to, no matter what, they're not handing up revenue coming in to cover everything they're asking for. So we're going to have to move either the whole pension to County Gen or somewhere else, or half of it.
And that discussion already happened.
We, there is a fix to that.
Okay. So just be aware. Okay.
Chad, didn't you just state it down, that is short-term fix?
Yeah, I mean, that's always been a short-term fix because we're just seated to pay for a pension plan. And so we've been agreeable for the past several years to do that. But I don't know why that can sustain forever, especially when we've committed seated dollars to pay for a new facility. So I just, you know, I'm not trying to change anything that they're asking for. I don't have a position on what they're asking for, one way or the other. I just want to make sure that we're also considering that that will impact the amount for pension part. And I don't see a way for commissioners to fund that forever. I mean, we have to come up with a more long-term.
Yeah, and we're just see the fund, we're designed to, to do something like that year after year after year.
Right.
That's what you said.
Yes. And we split it before, and now it's been told that it was long-term sustain. And I think when we've had a discussion, I think we've been talking about it.
So a little, a little more to this, a lot, few more pieces to this puzzle, so we do have a motion on table, paper, motion on the floor, table this. Then we'll figure out a time when we're going to discuss, I guess, is my feeling on it. Any more questions on the, the motion, discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of tabling, uh, the discussion on, on this wage package, raise your right hand. All those opposed, the same. Pass. So now we'll just have to figure out. When we're going to.
Okay, then I, I just have one more. The last request I have is from the sheriff's department on three new positions. I'll let him just cut.
I guess the basis of the three positions would be to, we tried and we attempted to run a twelve-hour shift schedule on what we had, and we just can't do it. So figuring in what we needed to do that to cover PTO is why we look for three. So, and we also understand, I think we had a good conversation with personnel committee about how it's even, they're trying to try and even build into this. I don't think it's fair to payroll, and that's why I made the comment, which showed, is that there's, we can't, I, I can't guarantee and say that we're going to go to twelve each year at one of them. With even three people through. I think that would put them in a terrible position, us in a terrible position, makes it have to change as far as SOBs, as far as benefit package, so that would be fairer than to try and get that done with payroll. So it would be a growing process to try and get that in by twenty twenty-five, or six, sorry. So we'll build that through with payroll through twenty-six, five to go into the back of twenty-six, a twelve-hour schedule. So you work more, more hours but less days, then we give you guys Friday, Saturday, and Sunday off, a bit of a weekend. Maybe working twelve, maybe it's basically split into four different squads, and you work with the same people every day. So I think, uh, that's also detracted too by working that, that schedule, just from the fact that you can give an officer. Where we get now, every six weeks, you're going to get every other Friday, Saturday, Sunday off. So. Yeah, there's more people on duty at that point in time, too.
Does anybody have any questions over the paperwork? I know I left Thor and Nick copies, and any questions on that? Jim and I talked, Jason talked for instance, on Friday.
No. So what was the, how did the discussion go? What we in here?
The personnel committee, we, we didn't decide on any of these, did we?
Right, no, we decided, right.
To you. It was a big enough request on all, on all, three from community corrections to the two requests from sheriff. I don't know if we ever asked a question, uh, would you consider one instead of three? I don't know if we ever asked that question. You give you one new deputy instead of three?
We take what we get.
Okay.
But we, what we do is put together what we think is good, what works in that schedule. So would it take some, I mean, adjust it.
And I told Jim on Friday, I said, we're not going to ask for things that we have. I'm not going to get behind that. The, the schedule in front of you for the twelve hours, that's what I called my green schedule. It's actually got four new positions on it. Three would get us started, four would get us in twenty-six.
One of the things in our discussion on Friday was, you know, we can look at the numbers and we think, okay, they got nineteen or twenty officers, and, and we think that those automatically are all on the road. And that's not the case. If I'm correct, you told me there's fourteen on the road.
Fourteen.
And when you're, and when you're short, you pull in tattoos, and, and I'm sure you guys cover and everything else. So the discussion was very good. I learned some things from it and that, so. You know, I believe, I don't know, we're going to make a decision here on this today, maybe that goes along with salary. You know, I believe, I don't know, we're gonna make a decision here on this today, maybe that goes along with salary package and everything, but. They helped me when I went and talked.
I'm hanging guys a hundred percent, but you have some big asks, you heard, and that's, that's, that's what makes it hard, because I want to give you what you're asking for.
And we understand this a lot, but it's just the money's a lot that you have to go through. Yeah, we're personal on there with the package, there's a ton, but again, like when you say, well, will you take this, we take that. We're gonna take it, I mean, you guys lived in the police world, you're gonna do, with an extra, one extra guy, it's still in somewhere. So sure, we're gonna ask for everything that we need to make it work all at once, why wouldn't, I mean, that's, that's what we're, that's what we're asking for, truly.
Yep. And I get that, just what you laid on, I understand it's a lot of.
I think we ought to table the discussion until we have. More time to digest what's been presented to us.
Is this a start in twenty twenty?
This is awful, yeah, this was the budget for preparation for twenty five.
That motion, John? Our motion from John and table this aspect, she probably.
Second.
Second by Nick. Discussion. Good vote, all those in favor of tabling, tabling this? Raise your hand. Okay.
No, I think.
No copies and anything, if they didn't get.
Yeah, if you, if you gave to Nick and Thor, then I think everybody should have copies of all that.
They have each of their numbers.
I appreciate that. I do want to apologize, I was not able to get away from work the last time, so that's. It happens, you know, my bad.
You know how to give this speech, don't you? Like, be the fifth time next night.
That, that'll catch us up on everything for personnel, right, John? Yeah, okay, I think we're good, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that should wrap up everything from Personnel Committee, Nick.
We'll keep things moving there, then we'll come back, timing on when we want to discuss this stuff.
For a future meeting.
Yes. Okay.
I'll start with just saying that, just like with any organization, that people are the greatest asset, so thank you for your consideration and investing in people, thank you for your continuous support with J-CAP, I think that's one program that. It's one of the few that will have the greatest impact on recidivism, or investing in, in rehabilitation for, for chemical addictions, so. Thank you for that. For Commissioner reporting, I just have a few things, we were notified early last week, Monday last week, I, I was aware of a. Hole in the roof of the courthouse in the copper dome. They took that dome off like maybe twenty years ago and they. Prepared the old dome and put it back up, and when they did, they used some sort of liquid caulk for the seams. And that hardened over time and cracked and, and came out, so we currently have Atlas at the building doing the final fences of the point tucking and whatnot, they. Identified that hole, they took pictures, they showed them the mark and he shared that with us. So Mark reached out to Don Brothers who specializes in copper and bronze roofing. And they politely declined to even give us a quote because they're so booked, it would be a year before they could get back and repair. And Atlas did give us a quote for forty seven thousand seven hundred seventy three dollars, so the commissioners followed the emergency repair procedures and. Signed an agreement with Atlas to make that repair. And then we declared it in our meeting per the Indiana statute, so is there any questions about that?
I remember when the dome was done, pigeons over the years had got in there and their minnowers decayed. They, they had to bring in my beams down and then reconstruct through that, so.
Yeah. And then yesterday afternoon, the power went out yesterday evening in downtown Columbia City, and since then, one of our rooftop units on this building hasn't restarted. So there's contractors here now who, you may notice it's a little warm in here, they're up there trying to get that restarted right now, going for some controls, some other maintenance. And then, I'll tell you that it's probably been two to three weeks now that I learned that. Every phone for Willie County government goes through what's called a phone room in the current jail, I was unaware of that, we. We restructured our phones, we had bright speed service, now we have a voice over IP service and. You know, a rack room in the basement of the jail, every phone for every building, Willie County government goes through there. So the commissioners met with SDS, used to be SOS, I believe. And just talked to them, they set that up and switched us to the voice over IP, and we're looking for solutions out of the, the phone system out of the current field. And maybe pop, probably into the survey of this building, but we're exploring the pricing on that right now. We also learned that our internet for the courthouse goes through the phone room first and into the courthouse, so there's just a couple of things we're working through, we're gonna move that out of that building. And that's all I have.
Question, Chad?
Must have been a big hole, forty seven thousand dollars.
So they're, they're removing along the, along the bottom of the dome, they're removing all of that material that's cracking. And replacing that, and a, a big share of the cost is the lift, they need a one hundred fifty foot boom. And so they, they've got through that cost and it's either their quote.
There's two of them operating right now.
Right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Is your deal meeting today, Chad?
I don't believe it was today, I think it was, I'll let you know.
I, I lost track, I.
I believe it was last week.
Okay.
Okay. Minutes. July second meeting? We have, we have last months that we approved to sign, and then we have, or should say in June, that we approved, and then we got July second. Minutes. Your pleasure.
Motion approved the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Motion by Donald, second by Nick. So we approve July second minutes. And discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand, all those opposed, the same. You have two sets here to sign. Now, schedule for. Discussion. On all. Wages and so forth.
If possible. An evening time would work best for me.
If we do an evening meeting, will we grant a minute for the sheriff's department?
I mean, they can adjust their schedule to be, okay, if it was an evening meeting.
If we did an evening meeting for the. Request, will it cause overtime for your department?
I think most of our, well.
He wants to be there.
I gotta say, do they really need to be here, Joan, for that? I don't think they will, you know, will they?
I thought we were discussing, that's why we're meeting, is for them.
We need Billy to be on call. He's.
I'll be here. Okay.
As long as it's not next Wednesday. On, on the spot exchange, the meeting is for, figure out what, what amount of money that we've got, how we're distributed. Is that what we're talking about? Is that something we can, is that a number that we can at least get a number set today, talk about a number of what we're willing to commit to? What we want to give as raises and that, and as requests from other departments that we have addressed yet, is that. Tiffany, do you have all the numbers that you need to, for us to put a number together to try to come up of what we're willing to commit to that?
Yeah, I think that at one point, we all received emails that showed total numbers, if we did thirty, five and seven percent increases, obviously that did not include sheriff's request for the seventeen for deputies. But obviously that's an easy. Take current rate, because whatever increase you're looking for, but they guys just let me know what you need additional from me in my office to. Help assist with any decisions or. I will say the information that they give you today for numbers that are in gateway and things like that, did not include any new positions, so. Be aware, very difficult that these would have had to that, they would have to be probably out of county gen because they're not.
Do we want this to be another work session?
Again, if we can do evening, that would be great. Daytime's hard for me to get away. Fifteenth works after four thirty.
Something we can work on today while we're here.
I don't. God, we talked, if you wanted more time to think about things.
I'm good, if we do some adjustment today, we're here.
The only thing I have is if I can just borrow at least one of you for X interview audit, that's directly after this meeting, then I can come back to do a workshop or anything.
I've got a meeting here any minute, shouldn't take long, I don't believe that I can come back. Is there, where, the personnel wasn't gonna be asking this, were we?
I guess I'd like to meet that, please. I'm just one person, so.
Next week works better for me. Have some meetings, Nick. Not to schedule for everybody else, but I got to put it out there.
I will be unavailable Friday, getting mine already moved to college, so. Tamela can sit in if you need her to, but well, no, Tamela's on Friday, too.
I'm off, I'm in my Sunday.
What about Thursday? Fifteenth.
I'll be going, but you guys can discuss it, I mean, I've been through it. A couple of times.
I think it's important that. As a group, we make a decision based on what money that we're, it's not just the money that's left, it's not just the money that's available, that is what is allotted to us this year. But we need to make decisions based on getting information from Tiffany on what the anticipated carryover from general, our county general is going to be next year. Along with what the state board of accounts recommends that we carry in that, or try to carry as a savings amount in there. And. Come up with a number that we're all agreeable, that we're, a number that we're all agreeable to spend, based on all these numbers, towards. Raises, sheriff's department request, and everybody's request that we have an answer to, so I think that's probably important, like we all need, are all able to meet together, it's because that numbers. That number we need to come up with, and then we can have discussions based off of that number and how we plan to distribute it.
An idea, idea of what our income is and what our expenses are gonna be.
That along with what are we, what are we willing to spend out of that money, or out of money that we still have available to us in the county general to.
Yeah.
Make things happen as well, which.
As long as we do the evening, I can make.
Twelve, thirteen or fourteen next week, then I, if everybody can be here.
I'm out of town on fourteen.
Twelve and thirteen.
I'm good.
Solid waste board meeting on the twelfth at nine AM. And. I believe it was a department head meeting on the thirteenth at nine AM.
Can we talk evening or day?
That's up to us for two.
I'm good in the evenings. I'll do noon evening. What time? Um, did you get everybody else?
Four, four thirty works best.
Four o'clock?
On what day?
Thirteen. Do you do the thirteen? Tim?
Yeah, that's all right.
Good for me.
The thirteen, four PM thirteen.
That should, that should be.
I, I know Kim's thought is if we need any information. His, his always concern is that we have availability of department information if we need to get it, so is that correct?
Yes.
So we're thirteenth at four o'clock.
I need for Paula to get home and get in the shower, then we need her.
What would be the, what would be everybody's idea on the agenda for, what are our, what are our hopes or what we, what we. Focus is gonna be on getting settled on?
Well, that pool of money, one thing. You know, I think. My personal feeling is when you, when you look at this, just. And everybody kind of, kind of in a way alluded to it. In some of our conversations, it's just, it's just not sour, because what we have to put into retirement, and that doesn't stop. You know, that, that continues on, what our benefit package is, and so forth, you know, I, I think we. We need to look at all that personally, and see where we're at, and see how we stand. But it's just not souring. So. Or your thoughts?
My thoughts are, at this point, that I have conflict on the October meeting and it's very likely that I'm not going to be here. And, but I am able to remote in from where I'm at for that meeting, correct? And I look at that as this could be more of a. Finalization of everything that we need to have accomplished by then anyway, so that's first and foremost, on my mind, is a concern to me personally. I think having this meeting next week. My objective or my main goal would be that we all can sit and have a very meaningful discussion on what we're willing to commit to a pot of money. And then we can either take the time then, or in our next regular scheduled meeting, then to start figuring out where we're gonna put the, put that, and then stick to. Stick to that number that we come up with, but that's my opinion on what I'd like to see.
I hope we get a lot of cheese on the thirteen.
Yeah.
So that we can kind of finish out things on the seventh.
I'm not.
Or the, whatever, September third and September.
Are you wanting this to be an additional meeting, that way you can make decisions, or is this just gonna be a workshop?
Well, it's true, where we advertise, isn't it, for it to be a regular meeting for decisions?
Um, I mean, we can do. Yeah, you have to post forty eight hours if it's a.
My opinion would be that it would be a regular meeting where decisions can be made. Whatever your views about that.
I would agree with that, just in case.
I also.
I'll give those agendas maybe posted.
Of course, if that being said, if anybody else wanted. Come to be here for that, or to potentially even have any interest in it, I don't know, I would think people would.
Okay. Do you see the 13th, 4 o'clock here? That's going to air to get you.
I just have one quick to say, Kay and I were able to sit with state board accounts and go over money from the redevelopment commission. And we were trying to figure out what was going on with that. And with state board account help, the money was not missing technically. It was just sitting in one of Kay's banks. Bank account and it should have been moved to another. So I know you guys signed that transfer for us to be able to get that done. And we just want to let you know that she balances now. Everything is good. So that's perfect.
Any comments from the public?
Don't even up here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm still admitting.
I know, and I know you have bigger things than what I'm going to ask you. And I have a bunch of your priority. Just want to clarify, with the facility, maybe we're not, we don't really have any reason to meet again. With the next step, either the commissioners bring you ARPA resolution as far as specific projects for our building or you are you not considering anything to our building?
I don't think we've really had anything presented to us to know, Rob.
Well, the original plan was present.
Way back.
Yeah, and then you did the tour and then we did the structural engineer report. So I just feel like as far as the committee, we shouldn't be needing it. It's really not a sure decision, but I don't know.
Well, I think commissioners had earmarked 300,000 originally for our. I think it was originally was. Was it 500? 515, okay. So it was.
And that's why I didn't know, like, should we start breaking it down? Because I know everybody's got their concerns and not even bringing it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think you guys have some information to share.
Yeah, and commissioners need to put a proposal for that ARPA funding together, said presented to us as council with the destination on how it's going to be utilized.
Breaking down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else besides Paula? John, you have anything?
Housekeeping question on, on the votes, were those the indicated no on the votes on the, some of the proposals that we had on it? I noticed that you signed on it, that you designated no.
Oh.
I've got it here.
She's got it here.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Joe. Thor.
Real quick, we solid waste board, we opened up our bids at our last regular meeting as far as taking our contract. We severed our contract for the recycling collection. And put out a big package and we received only one bid back in. It was, I would say significantly higher. Is that fair? So that one bid that we did receive is currently, I believe, still with the attorney and they're looking at it, but there's probably without. Without doubt, there's going to be an increase coming, another increase coming on collection of. Of our recyclables, which is going to be absorbed by the collection or by the increase that we did make here several months ago or. Previous calendar year. So it's going to be offset, but that is still in the process. I'll update you as a decision is made over.
It was good.
I was just going to ask, what's the board's feeling on making recycling opt-in or opt-out?
I think that's a great discussion and we've had that. I would be happy to take that up with you at probably a different forum. It's, there's something they thought on it. I would invite you to our next meeting too. Because there's probably going to be some more discussion on that. Okay.
Our next one is next Monday, I believe. We're usually the second Monday of the month. I believe that's the meeting I have reference to on the 12th at 9:00 AM and the meeting right here. And it is the second Monday of every month at 9:00 AM in this chamber.
And I saw your flyers out on the paper.
Yep. So that's coming up. That's a good thing.
Who are the company that's doing it now? The recyclable gathering them up? Is that, did they get, were they one of them that give you bid?
They were the only one. We received one bid. There were several companies that came and asked a lot of questions and attended the meetings. But we only received one bid. And it was, Teresa, it was a double, more, more than double the price of what we're currently paying.
No, there's a period career increase. I have to look at it. Bye.
Rob Shaky said, but overall it was more than double.
It's, it's a lot more around that. So. Yeah. Well, I do want, I do want to. On, on the personnel committee and, and Dan and Ted and Tamara and, and the speakers that sat in, we have spent a lot of time. Over five issues that we discussed today. And at times we just felt that we needed to bring it to the whole council. And get your thoughts on it. So I do applaud personnel for, for taking that time and of course the sheriff and everybody that presented several times. So. Thank you for that. Okay, meetings adjourned.